All right, good evening, everyone. I will call the meeting to order. Thank you to everyone for coming to our February meeting of the Board of Education. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we'll move into the Administrator Report on the Agenda Posting and Notification of the Meeting to the Media.
The agenda was posted at Three Lakes School and Sugar Camp School via email to the town of Three Lakes, town of Monaco, town of Sugar Camp, and the Demmer Library. Media notified via email includes the Vilas County News, the Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and the media notified by mail includes the WACD, WATK Radio.
Thank you. Next, we move to Amendments and Approval of the Agenda. Are there any amendments?
There are no amendments.
Okay. Hearing none, is someone willing to make a motion on the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Mitch? Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Stacy, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, five zero. Next, we go into Routine Approvals to Approve Minutes of the January 15th, 2025 Regular Meeting. If there are no changes, if there are no changes or concerns, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Michelle, second by Stacy. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, five zero. Next, we move to the Treasurer's Report.
I'll make a motion to approve checks dated January 9th, 2025 through February 13th, 2025 for accounts payable, ACH checks number 242-500-142 through 242-500-173, regular checks number 130723 through 130857, manual checks number 5802 through 5816, and wire transfers number 2024-00129 through 2024-00149 in the amount of $681,300, and ACH payroll checks number 900-44743 through 900-44997, and regular payroll checks number 59393 through 59396 in the amount of $374,159.09 for the total amount of $1,055,459.09.
Second.
We have a motion by Mitch, second by Michelle. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move to Public Comments. Do any, does any, do we have any comments from visitors regarding our agenda items? Seeing none, just a note, thank you to Sophie for being our student representative here tonight. Okay, next we move to Administrator's Report.
I have a brief update on the process where we are with the referendum and the planning. You've probably seen some social media posts coming out. We've actually been hitting it pretty heavily. Jen's been doing a great job. Lot coming at folks. On our website, we have what is called our microsite, which is dedicated to the referendum information. We're hoping we get a lot of traffic there because we feel that basically most of the questions are answered through that resource. It's well done. It's been very tailored, thanks to Jen's work with me and actually taking the lead in helping our folks at Nexus really get to who we are and what we want it to be. So I'm pleased with that. I do think people are checking it out. The concept boards are posted in the buildings, and the concept boards are like the basic maps and the drawings. I want to go ahead and say again for everybody here and in the public forum, these are conceptual. We cannot say this enough. They outline the spaces that need addressing, but this is not design. It has not gone to design at all. So what looks like a footprint, for instance, like at the Sugar Camp building, that's to account for the cost for square footage, and what's coming, that is not exactly what it may look like or where it may be precisely. There could be some tweaks and designs. In fact, we know there will be. So if someone asks you about like, "This is it?", it's like, "No, this is just so you know where we're going." So a lot of, lot to come on that as we go forward. We have some scheduled meeting dates to share the information. I'll be meeting with the Sugar Camp SEO organization, the parent organization, on March 2nd, and that's at the Fire Shed at nine o'clock on Sunday. On March 3rd, we have a meeting here in Three Lakes at the Auditorium at six o'clock. March 11th, we will be meeting at the Sugar Camp Library, IMC, at six o'clock. And then on March 13th, we're going to have a Blue Jay Trivia Night at the, oh my goodness, the Brew Station. Is that what you call it? The Brew Station? Yep. So that should be fun. Maybe get to share a few fun facts and figures about the history of the Three Lakes Blue Jays and have a little discussion along the way, trying to make it unique, so. And there'll be other things that have come up. We've reached out to a few organizations, let them know that if they are interested, we'd love to come and share information, or to contact us if they would just like to come on in or, you know, have a visit. So we're trying to get the things rolling to be very visible, very, very out there, you know, answering any questions that may come to be. Do you have any questions on that so far? That is it for my report? Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Next, we move into New Business, starting with March Meeting Dates.
Our March meeting date is scheduled for Wednesday, March 12th at 6:00 PM in the Three Lakes Boardroom. Just a note, last month, we did decide to move it up a week because March 19th, which would have been a regularly scheduled meeting, falls during spring break. We do not need to make this an action item because we did so last month.
Okay, and just a note, I will be remote, and Stacy will be running the helm.
Stacy will run it.
Very good. Doing fantastic.
Absolutely.
Okay. Next, we move to Second Friday Pupil Membership Count.
Caleb has prepared this for us. It's very similar to what you have seen each year. We have the first Friday, or the third Friday count, of course, that starts in September, and then we have the second Friday count in January. And looking over the enrollment numbers, this is something that's nice to see. We didn't go down in our enrollment. We actually went up. We're looking at like a plus six from the original count. We stay pretty stable, and this number is always flexing. People move in, people move out, but it's pretty solid. It's what we have planned for within our budgeting. We're always very conservative, so it's actually nice to be a few students above where we do a lot of the planning from. Caleb has also included within your packet some more in-depth information as far as if there's questions as to what was the reason for additions or subtractions, but that's really just for your information. As you can see, there's very little movement, but there's a variety of reasons. People have things happening in their lives, and that's what generally leads to someone moving in or somebody moving out. Any specific questions on our count for January?
Okay. No action as presented?
No.
Okay. Okay, hearing no questions, we will move to Consider Approval of Personnel Report of New Hires and Resignations.
Well, we have kind of a special one tonight. For hirings, we do have May Coach, who has been hired as our head varsity track coach, and Alan Okowski as our junior high volunteer assistant football coach. And we have an announcement, a retirement this evening, and Marcy is here with us, Marcy Running, fifth grade teacher from Sugar Camp, who has given 30 years to the district. Marcy, would you like to say a few words?
Can we deny it before you talk? No?
Can I say a few words? I have to have them in my hand because I'm a speech coach, but I don't do this well. As I walked in here, I went, "I taught all the years, taught your oldest one, your dad was school board." Remember when I started? Taught both years, taught both years. You guys went to Sugar Camp? You know, wow, it's what it's been of recent, but you received my letter, and I just would like to share that with you, I guess, personally. So, dear members of the Three Lakes School Board, I have been part of this district for a long time. I started in first grade here, 12 years as a student, left for my undergraduate and returned back after a year and a half of teaching in points, and feel very blessed to be able to have come home and had my full career here. But after 32 years of teaching, 30 of which have been as a fifth grader in Sugar Camp, I intend to retire after this school year. I've watched all classroom teachers turn over at least once. Survived a few principals. And I've gone from saying I taught your older sister to I taught your mom. And former students have come in and been student teachers, and two of my colleagues are currently former teachers. And when I look across the hall to the fourth grade teacher, and I say, "Ooh!", or he brings me on, he brings me on Teacher Appreciation Day, still a gift, and said, "I just had to do it." I had to.
Oh, Marcus.
You know, it's time, and I love teaching and know that I will somehow always teach in some capacity, but I've experienced life cut short one too many times. And I want to enjoy whatever this next chapter of my life might bring. You got to finish a chapter in a book and turn a page to start a new one, and I'm very excited to be starting a new chapter in my book. But the one I am completing has been pretty darn good to me, and I'm going to miss it terribly. So I feel very fortunate to have worked through the Three Lakes School District my entire, almost my entire career, last 30 years, and I'm very grateful for all of this work on the way that you have offered me and the community, so, thank you.
Thank you, Marcy.
I think we owe you a bigger thank you than you owe us.
I would agree.
And you're not the toughest teacher in Sugar Camp.
And I am.
The rumor is you are.
But they all come to school with a smile on their face.
They do. Thank you, Marcy.
Thank you.
Okay, well, unfortunately, we're going to need a motion on this one, we're ready.
I'll make a motion to approve the Personnel Report as presented.
I will second.
We have a motion on the floor by Stacy, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Next, we move to Consider Approval for Seventh through Twelfth Grade Students to Participate in the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. We actually have a guest with us tonight from the Health Department.
Um, just a sec, do I? I'm nervous walking, so I will shake slightly and I will be very hostile.
I'll let Mr. Bott take the lead, and nobody else is better.
So, yes, thank you for the opportunity to talk about the Youth Risk Behavior Survey in your Board Packet.
You should have received three documents. One of them was a general overview of the YRBS, and then there was an actual sample of the junior high survey, and as well as the high school YRBS. You had a chance to look at the overview of what the survey is all about, from a local district level all the way up to the county level, and you had a chance to look at hopefully some of the questions and the, kind of just the protocol of what that survey looks like. And like Mrs. Maney mentioned, we have Kami here as an expert. Historically, in my time here, we have not offered the YRBS here to our seventh through twelfth graders, so Kami can talk about the historic perspective of applying it here. But it'd be great if there's any questions or anything as far as the specifics that Kami would like to talk about from the county level.
Yeah, I, if it's beneficial for everyone, I'm not sure how much information everyone knows or background about the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, but I'd be more than willing to share some of that and kind of the how and why we do it at a county level and stance. So majority of this is short-term, you'll hear, we call it YRBS. It's a very short way of just going around it. But basically, this survey is just a very big general survey that measures youth's health-related behaviors or experiences that could potentially lead to adverse childhood experiences or events. That's a lot, and I didn't know how much people would probably understand that. So in more layman's term, I summarize it to basically, this just kind of informs us what our youth are doing within our community. And so the real big piece about the YRBS is that it is done on a two-year rotation. It is conducted by majority of public health schools. Some of them can opt out. It's not required. It's something that is strongly encouraged through most public schools to participate in because of some of the information I will share in a little bit. But it's conducted every two years, and what the information does is it not only provides a general overview of what your school internally looks like with the response of some of those questions you may or may not have got to look at prior to our meeting, but it also ultimately is a collective whole image of our county. So individual responses are taken from the school districts. They can be Three Lakes High School, Lakeland Union High School has been a participant for a while, Rhinlander High School, who has participated for a very long standing, and then we have a couple of middle schools who also do participate. And what happens is all of those school reports get accumulated into one giant county report, and that is what gets shared with the community. Individual school reports don't get shared, and we try to make that very important because that is not something that is really needed to be seen. We say that every school district is its own little colony. You know, you would have to adjust to however your school is needed, but we take a wider approach and just take a look at the county report, which is, like I said, a cumulative counting. And so, I don't have to skip ahead, I might have PowerPoint, not knowing what to expect, but how we kind of use the YRBS data is it is utilized not only for internal school districts, but also at multiple different county organization levels. So there's usually about three buckets that we use the data in. One of those is community programs or grants. So many of the grants that I actually work in are heavily, when we put in applications, the YRBS data is heavily used in that. It supports a lot of the efforts and the events and things that we want to put on in our community to better our community. So we see a lot of that in our community grants, and it's not only the Health Department. We have like, I can't name them off the top of my head, but we have other community programs who do utilize this. We have external youth programs, like the Boys or Girls Club, the YMCA. When they write for grants, when they write for funding, they're able to use this as another supporting piece of their work. And then schools ultimately, who do the survey, get to use this data to help support school initiatives and programs and stuff like that. So those are just the different types of organizations, and they use those, they use that data to do a whole bunch of things, like developing programs, interventions, shaping policies, you know, applying for grants and funding, that's a really big one that we use it for, tracking trends over time to see how your school is doing or how your youth are being affected by whatever current trend is going on in the community, raising awareness or using it for advocacy, curriculum development, and community partnerships. So those are just some of the things that we have seen and it is being utilized for. And so that kind of also then touches into why it's beneficial and why we use the YRBS. And so it not only does many of those things, like provide funding, but it also shifts more into our youth's lens. I'm a coach at the Rhinlander High School as well, so I coach volleyball. I'm also an independent figure skating coach at the Rhinlander Ice Arena. So I work with youth on a daily basis, and so I've seen the change, and I've recently, I'm going to say recently, that's not recent, but I've seen the change, and I have siblings in school, and looking at it and being able to see the change over time from when I was in school, laid out in a data format, it gives me hope that I know I can make a really good change for my sister and my future nieces and nephews and my kids. And so we look at it as it improves youth's own health, like it supports that funding. It guides current trends and risks, so we have helped kids avoid some of those risk factors that put them in places where we're not comfortable or they really shouldn't be in. It also influences policy change. It helps prevent future health-like issues and crises. It builds community partnerships, which are so important nowadays, and it also empowers our future generations to want to be better than what they are now, or to make change in their world, so that way we can start building the leaders of tomorrow, basically. And so what I'm proposing today is that the YRBS typically, we work with a Wisconsin consultant who is in charge of working with all the schools to get the YRBS up and going. We've recently come into the knowledge of, we're not quite sure where it's going to be landing right now. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey is kind of up in the air at this point, but what I'd like to propose today is we would really love if you guys would consider being a part of it, taking the survey, allowing kids to, you know, express however they are behaving or experiencing within the survey to share with us, so we can help make the community change. And so right now, the survey deadline has passed. I do want to be very transparent about that, but we also don't know kind of what's going on right now, so it's, we're in a weird limbo state at this point. So like I said, my proposal here today is just hopefully get your consideration for possibly taking the survey in the future, allowing the students to take it in the future, so. And I have the web link to where you can find more information about it if you ever need it. The school, or the survey is posted prior to launch, and it has different modules you can choose to incorporate into the survey. We have a grant right now, our Drug-Free Community Grant, which utilizes this data, and it is required by our grant to report on it, so it's kind of just whatever you guys feel like is best for your community and your school, but we would just love it if you would be a part of it, so.
When is the deadline? When was the deadline?
The deadline was on the Monday.
So I'd like, actually, I'll tell you, so they did extend it for us.
Oh, they did.
I mentioned that based on school board approval, that we could still register for it if the school board approves.
It was just this past Monday?
Yes. It was this past.
Yeah, so I reached out, I saw that, so that is an issue for us. We could still, if the board supports that.
Okay.
We could administer it this year.
That would be wonderful, but like I said, it's up to whatever you guys believe would be best for your student body.
Is it every student that takes it, or?
So it goes, so this is, the survey's based off of actually the census, so for us to receive a county report, we need at least two school districts, two high school school districts to participate in the survey. Right now, we have one school district on board. The other one has unfortunately dropped out. So at this point, you are our deciding factor on whether or not we get a county report this year. Don't let that have too much power over anything, but it goes based off of the percentage of youth in the county. So if so many individuals take the survey, so let's say like 50% of your students from this school take the survey, that is considered enough students to be supported to make a community or a county-level grant or county-level survey, so. And they have that criteria on their website, too, so if you have more questions about that, I can also help you navigate that.
Is it just random kids picked to take it, or is it?
It would be all time. That's a great question. I'm actually not completely positive on who would take it or how it's implemented. I only know that it is all anonymous, so no kids' names are ever on the report, and that's just kind of the extent of that.
Students and parents would have the option to opt out?
Yes, they do have the option to opt out, so what I believe is everyone gets offered the opportunity to take the survey. If your child or if a parent decides to opt out of the survey, then they just opt out, and that's where that 50, that census percent would come into play, and it would go based off of how many kids within your school just have taken it, so.
So Ryan, you'd communicate with parents first?
Absolutely.
And then?
We would be very transparent.
So what are we looking at for a timeline on this?
Another great question. So how it would be is they, there is a representative from the state who would communicate with Ryan about getting the survey out to students. The hard thing is that receiving the data back from the state has taken a lot longer than many people have enjoyed or liked. We still haven't received middle school data from '21, which, yes, is very problematic and concerning, but we have just recently gotten our high school one, but that is because we strongly fought for it. We had to reach out multiple times and work with the school districts to make sure like, "Hey, are you okay with us sharing it? We would love to make a county-level report." So it could range between a couple of months. It's really hard to say because, like I said, we're not quite sure where it's going to land this year anyway, so I think that's probably the best answer I can probably give at this point.
Is this similar to what the freshmen did in junior high when they got Culvers Cards for?
No, that was different.
That was different than what this is?
Yeah, it was definitely more comprehensive. There's more pieces to it, more categories that are assessed in the survey.
Okay.
It's about 80 to 100 questions. It would take roughly around, I believe what they stated was 45 to 60 minutes, any standard class time, and yes, there are multiple different buckets. There can, I have a list of them. They can range anywhere from behaviors that contribute to unintentional injuries or violence, tobacco, alcohol, and drug use, sexual behaviors, unhealthy dietary behaviors, or physical activity and obesity, mental health, technology and online behaviors, and school safety or climate. So it covers a variety of different questions, and like I said, like boys mentioned, it is optional for parents or students to opt out, but.
Is her recommendation from the Administration?
Well, I will just backtrack a little bit. Ryan and myself met with Krista Nople, the elementary counselor. We have principals there, and we met with Mo Gross originally, and we do have a few different options. First of all, if you were able to review the questions and all, they do get pretty in-depth. We do also have the opportunity to start small. As Kami mentioned, there is two separate surveys. There's the junior high, or what they call the middle school survey, which is a little bit unique to us because we're a seven-eight program, where the other middle schools would be six-eight, and then there's the nine through 12 for the high school program. And looking at it, you know, we felt collectively that this would be good data for us to be informed, to help us with knowing our students better, the behaviors that are going on in our community, and just have it as a good resource. We felt like even if we could get a start with maybe our high schoolers, start small, and look at expanding to the junior high, middle school in the future, if the board didn't feel comfortable going all in, we agreed collectively that we would be okay with that. We really didn't see a major issue with the junior high, other than we did not prefer to bring the sixth grade into the data at this point. Sixth grader in separate buildings, separate situations, they're not interacting in a middle school setting. So that's basically where we landed on that. So Justin, or Phil, or Ryan, did you want to contribute anything to our conversation?
Caleb? Is anyone willing to make a motion?
I will make a motion to allow the seventh, twelfth grade students to participate in the Youth Risk Behavior Survey as presented.
Second.
I guess my comment would just be that, to make sure that parents are very, given that it's very explicit that, you know, you have the option, you know? So, I guess that's my only thing.
We'll get a communication out and make sure we're very transparent with all the details and the opt-out process and go from there.
Yeah, we talked at length about that administratively. We absolutely don't want to do anything that our parents wouldn't feel comfortable with. We do hope that they understand the purpose, but yet, that is their parental decision, and we will respect that. And, that information would be over-communicated rather than under-communicated, because that's how important it is.
We do have a motion on the floor by Mitch, second by Michelle. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Thank you, Kami, for coming in and providing your information and treats.
Yes, please use all of those up. I also had a printed copy of any of the survey information, if you guys wanted to take a look at it, so I can do that here for you guys. But, thank you for letting me come. That's great.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bach.
Thank you.
Next, we move to consider approval of new courses, Firefighter One and Hazardous Materials in collaboration with Northland Pines.
Yeah, so we have an academic co-op opportunity with Northland Pines to offer a Firefighter One course. In your board packet, you're given the description of the Firefighter One course, and it is a year-long course embedded in that class is the certified Firefighter One, as well as the hazardous material operations component. A little bit of information that I found out above and beyond the descriptions that were provided to you. It'll be taught at Northland Pines High School, of course. Historically, this class has been held on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursdays from eight AM to nine AM. Northland Pines, they haven't completed their schedule yet. They actually have a meeting going right now to decide exactly what that schedule will look like, but they are planning on running the same schedule as they have historically, three days a week, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. So, it'll start at the beginning of the school year, and it will last the duration of the entire school year. Upon successful completion of the course, students would earn two-point-four college credits for the Firefighter One class, and a half a credit for the Hazmat Operations course. So, again, it's year-long, so they would earn the two-point-nine college credits, which would equate to one high school credit, okay? Similar to a class that they would take all year long here at the high school. The minor conflict that our students who engage in this opportunity may come in, you know, what may arise is the start of our school day is eight, ten to nine o'clock, so the transportation back after the course, they'd probably get here about eight-twenty, eight-thirty-ish. But, we could be creative in the scheduling process to potentially ensure a study hall during second hour, so that they wouldn't miss too much academic time during that second hour. Part of this class, or upon successful completion of the course, the student would earn five-hundred dollars through the CTE incentive grant. The district would earn approximately seven-hundred dollars for successful completion of the class. So, that's all part of the CTE incentive grant, the information that we would provide the states at the end of the school year. The course would cost seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars per student. So, through the CTE incentive grant, would roughly be a wash to the school district. Are there any questions from any board members?
Do you have to be a certain age to take this course?
Junior or senior level.
How much interest do you think, Ryan?
We have a competition coming up here at Nicolay, and we have four students signed up for the firefighter portion of it. I think this runs in conjunction with our EMT course. Some of the students who are involved in that course have signed up for the competition, the firefighter competition at Nicolay. So, I predict probably three to five students each year would be interested in something like this.
This is something that has been, I would say, visionary. Scott Foster and I have talked about it for a few years now, and with the EMT course coming to Three Lakes, which has been very well-received, they have the opportunity to participate with us as well. They would then hold this on their grounds. We really want to develop any kind of community support type of programming that our students may have a lifelong interest in any way, or get their foot in the door. Maybe this gets them exposed to something in a career path that's like, hey, I would like to go a little bit further. So, it does really answer some multiple needs, and I think it's also one of those things we can have pride with. Our kids are becoming those productive citizens and giving back to the community.
Any chance we can offer an opportunity for our kids to go beyond school and not just a college aspect, but, you know, like you say, a lifetime skill or career, I think is a great opportunity.
Ryan, has there been any communication with the volunteers, like our local departments? Because I know we have some local volunteer departments who actually employ our students here at Three Lakes and have in the past. Is that something that they, anyone has reached out or talked to them?
I know during the discussion at Northland Pines tonight, they were going to include the local fire departments to talk about this class and just bring more awareness to the local departments. But, I believe absolutely, we have a community service date coming up here in May, and the local firefighters are going to be part of that. So, that's going to also increase awareness for our students, what we have here locally, and in conjunction with this class. I think that's really going to increase that post-secondary readiness factor that we don't have in place right now, that can really help students get to that next level.
Might also save them a cost to put them through Firefighter One at the volunteer level.
Northland Pines was very hopeful that we would go forward with this course and programming, and it was actually said to me, if we're on board, then that opens the opportunity for instance, to invite the Sugar Camp Volunteer Department. Three Lakes has been supportive in the preliminary discussions, and in fact, they feel the program would be much more enriched if some more community, local organizations could be supportive of it. So, I think it's just the opening of what it can be.
Any other questions, feedback? Okay, is anyone ready to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the new Firefighter One Hazardous Material courses in collaboration with Northland Pines as presented.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Josh, second by Stacy. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bach.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we move to, thank you, Kami. Consider approval of alternate pathway to graduation requirements.
All right, I'm going to let Mr. Zeus take over on this one.
For sure. Thank you, Terry. I believe you have in your board packets a lot of information about a program called GED Option Two. The request for you to consider tonight is that we add some language into our existing policy as it pertains to graduation. The reason for this is currently, if, in a couple of cases I can think of in the short term right now, when students, especially when they transfer in, and they are, we don't have, fortunately, we don't have a ton of kids who are credit deficient that have been with us all along. But, when a kid, a student comes here, and they're significantly credit deficient in their junior or senior year when they come in, we don't have a lot of in-house options in order for them to successfully complete any sort of high school experience with us. Mathematically speaking, it's nearly impossible, or impossible, to hit the credit mark in the amount of time that we have to work with students. So, what we are proposing is to put in an alternate pathway for students to earn a diploma or a high school equivalency, or diploma through the Three Lakes District through a program other than shipping them out to Nicolay or Saint. Because currently, we have in our policy, kids can go and get their GED someplace else, and then come back two years later, and we could, the board could consider issuing them a Three Lakes diploma. We don't have an in-house option. If we were to approve an alternate pathway, we now would have an in-house option for kids who are significantly, and meet the criteria for credit deficient, for credit deficiency. We have staff and personnel on hand right now, on staff right now, who are credentialed and able to operate a GED Option Two program. We've got tentative Green Lake from the State of Wisconsin DPI. We need to have it in our board policy, though, in order for us to be able to offer that. Ray would be here tonight to speak to you about this, but if you've got questions about the GED Option Two, I'm pretty confident I can answer most of them, because we had a GED Option Two at the worst place I worked. Ray, is that actually the, she's on the state board for the Narenwich Committee, which is basically your At-Risk Planning and At-Risk Programming Committee for the State of Wisconsin High Schools. GED Option Two programming is a way for kids to earn their high school diploma through equivalency tests that stay in-house, and so, we don't have to rely on Nicolay or anybody else to provide an HSED program. Before I go too much further, I want to just highlight what I, or what we're asking for tonight. We have currently in place in our policy thirty-two, thirty-three, as it pertains to graduation and alternate, other than the means of reaching our credit requirements. We already have two criteria in there. I'm proposing we add a third. And the language I'm proposing we add into number three, we already have number one, number two, and number three would be, when the student has satisfactorily completed the requirements of an alternate pathway to a high school diploma provided by the Three Lakes School District, such as the Wisconsin GED Option Two program, or a blend of GED equivalency assessments and high school course credits. And what that means, what that means is, I'm thinking of a case right now. We have a student who is all good with credits except for in science. So, if we were to put language like this in place, if that student would successfully complete the battery of tests to demonstrate the state-level competencies in science, but had credits for all the other courses and their electives, we could then issue them a diploma come May. That's what I'm asking, or what we're asking. The GED Option Two has a lot of rigor to it. It's a good program. From having firsthand experience of seeing it run, I think it's better than most HSED programs that kids would get if they drop out of school and go and try to get it at the local tech or whatever school. It's better, in my opinion, in terms of the relevancy. And it's not just tests, there's other requirements to community service, which follows right in with what our board has in place already anyway. So, many schools have some sort of in-house option. I believe this would bring us up to speed with having that ability. I don't see us having this fall into a spot where there's six, eight, ten students doing this every year, but in the last few years, we've had a small handful. I can think of a couple over the last couple of years, where had we had something like this, we may not have lost them as a dropout, or lost them to enroll into a district who does have some sort of programming for an alternate pathway to a diploma. Questions? Discussion?
We have an expectation, especially if it's run by our staff, on the quality that comes out of it versus letting them go somewhere else.
I actually feel much more comfortable about this as an alternative pathway, because they're getting it now while they are a high school student. What we have in our policy is a little antiquated, when you think, then two years later, you could come back and make the request. You want them to get that diploma, so they can be setting their future. And if you had a chance to review very thoroughly, it is more rigorous, and much more controlled, and much more, we're going to make sure you succeed. Justin made a really good point. Very, very few times has it turned out that one of our own students who have been with us all along are credit deficient like this, because we are keeping track. But, historically, the last few years, we have had people, kids coming in, juniors, you know, for credits. That's a hill that is almost impossible to achieve. Just if you're willing to work hard, be dedicated to it, it's an option.
Carrie, what's your take? Does it benefit your program in space a lot?
Providing it in-house, too, removes the barrier for some of our students who may not have a driver's license, and they cannot get to Nicolay. So, it really, it would help us immensely.
What kind of a stretch on our resources is this?
None.
That's a really good question. It was one of my initial first concerns as well. Because of our volume, we don't have to appropriate a staff member for a half a day, or three-quarters of a day to run this like it is in other places where there's so much volume. With the volume that we're expecting and that we have currently, this is something that's probably, as Terry mentioned, it's not going to cost us a thing. We have Ray here already, Grossman, and she would be leading the program, and if anything, we could potentially maybe need a support here or there, just for supervision's sake, but it's not going to be any more than one period of the day for her to get the kids cranking on this. So, we can definitely, at the current caseload that we're thinking, we would be fine without having to add any staff.
Any other questions or feedback from the board?
One thought, I guess, and this goes back over a number of things. I mean, we've added all kinds of options for these kids, from extra classes to co-op education with other schools, to catch-up stuff. We just need to be very sure, from an administrative standpoint, that we are, that we make sure that all these kids and parents know that all these options are out there. Whether it's website revision, whether it's the, whatever, whatever it takes, we just need to make sure that all these people know these options are out there. I guess is my only thought.
Completely agree, because we should be celebrating the power of this small district and the opportunities that are being put forth. Very good point, Josh.
If there are no other questions, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the alternative pathway to meeting graduation requirements through the Three Lakes School District as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Stacy, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Zeus.
Thank you.
Next, we move to consider approval of the 2025-2026 school staff calendar.
All right, we have the draft for you to take a look at tonight. This has been a process that I started back in November, actually, to gather staff feedback, share the reasons, the parameters of what this calendar has to be shaped around. On the surface, there's so many factors that go into it, so I'm kind of repeating myself for those who've been here for a while, but not only the number of instructional minutes that we have to meet, but we do have to respect the law that, you know, we are not allowed to start until September first. And, we also are looking at the way the different holidays fall within the calendar. We now have the whole series of Act Twenty, which has required periods of days that must occur in between testing dates. On top of all, and Ryan was still here, all the other testing that we have with the forward exam, the ACT, you name it, we are very driven by outside controls that are legislatively in place. Not having flexibility and not wanting Not having flexibility and not wanting our students to have to go to school until June twentieth has a big, big factor in what this calendar shapes out to be. So this year, it tries to look very closely at reflecting what we did this past year. A couple of points that I just want to share with you is we have at the beginning of the year in August, our in-service days that will also include bringing new staff in for those training and mentoring days, and that's where we get all of our in-service work done. We then also have kept the eight one-hour sessions after school. Those are for continuing professional development so we can keep the work going that we have started and don't want it to get old or stale. That is tough. It's a, it's a big ask of the staff, but it is really very well worth it. And we have support to continue that. We'll tweak it a little bit next year again to our needs, but feel that that is very important that we keep that in the calendar. Looking at November, we are keeping the same proposed calendar dates for Thanksgiving. There are some districts that take the entire week off. The report's back. We're, you know, very mixed. Either way, it can go. And students, of course, have parent-excused absences. Should that be a time when they choose to use that absence for, whether it's celebrating the holiday or some people use it in hunting season, though that's a very minimal factor here at Three Lakes. The biggest change this year is looking at December with the way Christmas falls and trying to keep a cohesive schedule. It makes for a very long break. It was not well received to have to come to school one day, like the twenty-second, and then have the twenty-third off. It was very important to many people that they have the twenty-third off for a travel day or getting to what they need to do since the twenty-fourth is a celebrated day as well. And then, if you look on the other end of it going into January, with the first being again on Thursday, it was difficult to ask families to come back one day a Friday before a weekend. Again, it just seemed that this was kind of the anomaly in the schedule, that this year have that two-week break is what falls in line. Questions so far? Looking forward within the rest of the calendar coming up in March, the proposed spring break, we went back and forth. Anything from tying it to Easter, which is in April, which would be quite late, to somewhere between the second and the third week in March. The second and the third week in March, and talking with Phil and looking at the athletic schedules and working with Ryan on ACT testing and such, there are three testing windows, so we can make that fit nicely. Hopefully, that works kind of into the down season between the full force of one April, May, and such get going again with our spring sports season. And that's where it tends to fall. Some districts choose a week that they stick to it. Others try to attach it to Easter. Northland Pines historically uses the third week of March until this calendar that they're doing, they're attaching it to April till Easter. So I do know that from them sharing that with us. So that would be a bigger change. Feedback is that staff would prefer to see it earlier than later, just because it's winter and March is still snowy. And if we're going to do it, it fits within the testing windows that I explained earlier to fall that week. Questions about that one, since that's probably the bigger change?
It seems really early. I don't know if it just seems that way, the March break. Have we been, have we been that early?
Well, this year, we're the following week.
Yeah.
So it's only one week earlier.
Yeah, I know.
And we didn't have in the past, having to work around the forty-five day windows with an Act Twenty. And I've said this, and people probably think I'm being kind of cruel or unfeeling, or we can eliminate spring break, which has been what many of the neighborhood schools are doing and what many schools in Wisconsin have had to do to fit it in. And I don't think that would be well received in our community, but it is a reality of what we're looking at now.
And it's too, I mean, it's pretty equidistant, the second or third week, so it breaks up the two months on either side.
I would also want to note then, looking at April, it would just be Friday, the third, that would be off. Monday, the sixth, will be a school day. It's just going to be a three-day weekend to fit within our, our days. This gives us safely, at the high school level, two days built in of a snow or a cold event. And that would then allow us to be still getting out on June fourth, with that being an early release day. And I should make a correction. It's not two days. It's actually a third day by, a third day of built-in for time. And it also fits well with the ACT schedule. If we would have to make up time, that gives us at least that Friday, one more day, without having to go into the next week.
Is the staff generally happy?
Yep. Well, everybody has an opinion. Everybody was able to give feedback, and I've shared right along where it is. I had to land that, well, this is where, what fits best where, and I've shared this with staff, and they are very well aware. So they like the two weeks at Christmas. There was not a big appetite for going Monday and half a day Tuesday.
Any questions or feedback? If there are none, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the school staff calendar for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second.
We have a motion by Mitch, second by Stacy. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Next, we move to consider approval of land use with Jan Alsager for the trap club.
Just want to bring this formally to you. We do have approval. Mr. Alsager is very wonderfully working with us again, welcoming our students of the trap club to shoot on his property. Want to go ahead and formally get the approval from the board and have him sign the contract as we did last year. All insurances, all concerns, all matters are exactly the same as last year. This is just your formal approval.
Questions or concerns on this one? If not, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve land use with Jan Alsager for the trap club for the twenty-twenty-five season.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Stacy, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Next, we move to school forest camp three update.
Just a very brief report. We have our hearings scheduled on Friday at ten-thirty at O'Naito County Courthouse.
Next, move into district-related positive happenings.
We had a summer ski trip last Friday. It went really well. It was on Valentine's Day. Kids liked it. It was a little bit cool starting out, but I think they enjoyed it. It was a good time all around, so.
We have four K open house and registration for the upcoming school year. And we did that on the same day as current teacher conferences. So far, in Three Lakes, we have seventeen registered and ten in Sugar Camp.
Great.
Well, there are two potentials, so I'd be around twelve, so room to grow. But those are good numbers, just preliminarily.
So yeah, to that, forty percent of those in Three Lakes are girls, so that's a good sign.
That's good, because I think, I think one in Sugar Camp is a girl.
We had our teacher conferences, as you know, are by invitation, but those were well-done, well-attended. And just, I guess, commendation to our, our reading implementation team, getting all those PRPs and Act Twenty requirements done that went more smoothly than I thought it was going to go. And, you know, it's, it's just well-done, so got through that, too.
Celebrated the hundredth day of school by finding a hundred pictures of me all over the place.
I heard they're still, are still there, are they still showing up?
Today, our student council spent the afternoon playing banjo at Friendly Village, and they donated a bunch of war games from money that they raised with the candy cane sale earlier this year. Our spelling bee is this Friday, and then Sutton Pitlick will be representing Sugar Camp and Three Lakes at the state speaking competition, which is March fifth. So another year that we're sending a sixth-grade student to the state competition. So last year, Eddie Shanick, we took second, so.
We're in the midst of winter homecoming week, and things are going well. Student council's done a nice job with events and dress-up days. I don't typically wear red when I go to school, but this was a staff had to do. What's in there in the week, please?
Inside.
Thank you. I've never seen it. Anyway, Disney-themed winter homecoming going well. Dance on Saturday.
Is that what they picked for you, for your character, or?
No, no, no. The angry part? No, that was my choice. My youngest child picked that, so I didn't have to wear red. I said, "God." And staff had pretty good participation. I think there was ten or twelve in the, in the picture with, for today, so that was good. Also, ice fishing team that we combined with Phelps Ford, the Three Lakes Phelps Ice Fishing Team, just wrapped up a pretty successful season. The events, I gotta look at my phone so I don't misquote any of these. The events that we participated in had a really good showing. The first tournament, they, they had a hundred and one teams across the state were entered. Our kids took fifth. The second one we entered, there were eighty-four teams, and our kids took seventh. And then, most recently, the state tournament, which actually got to happen in person this year, which was kind of bizarre. The last two years, it's been canceled because of weather. There were one thousand and fifty student anglers participating. Ninety-seven teams, and our kids finished twenty-third. So a pretty respectable showing, especially in that state tournament where it's completely unfamiliar water for those kids down in La Crosse on Lake on Alaska. And they found some fish. Big thanks to Mr. Protelli because he stepped up big this year with Mr. Stott stepping away from the education gig. He was kind of flying solo, so he did a really nice job giving that opportunity to our kids.
Jen?
Yes, we had also on Feb. six, we had Nexus here with their camera crew and did interviews for the referendum videos. It was such a good day of listening to people talk about our district. Everybody that came in from the community, the planning committee that came in, to our staff members, to our students, everybody was, there was like this theme of community that really came through, that they talked about how proud they are of Three Lakes and why this is important. And it was, we all even cried when Mr. Kirby was interviewed, so it was a, it was a good day. That was real positive. So that'll, that'll be coming out on March fifth. Hopefully, we'll start to see some finished products from that.
Shout-out to Jen on the backstop of that. If you had to get interviewed, you and the team made it more comfortable in a nerve-wracking experience with the camera crew. And as always, between trying to follow Instagram and the Facebook page, the digital imaging, the things that are going out to the public with reference to everything from sports to the referendum, the face of Three Lakes looks amazing to the public. So keep up the great work on that.
Fun side note, I had all the yearbooks. I would have gotten them in my office, you know, digging through stuff, and the kids started pulling them out then, too, and were like discovering all this stuff about the school that none of us knew, you know, how it was three stories and what prom used to look like. So it's been fun watching them dig through it, too.
It's awesome.
They also, there's a little fun tidbit in there. One of the first interviews here at Three Lakes, Mr. Busco brought his marketing class in to watch, like, the setup and everything, so that was cool for them to see hands-on marketing experience happening.
Any others? Okay. We will move to WASB correspondence and updates.
I don't have anything official from them as far as upcoming dates and such. We talked about the day at the Capitol, which does not work for us because we're having a session. And then I have here for you some member recognition certificates that go with your years of service, and those arrived, so I get to present those. So Alicia, you get your award level one for region two. There you are. And we have Josh, award level two for you. And Michelle, award level two for you. And thank you again so much for your commitment to this. Exactly. They were at the convention. I thank you all for your dedication and willingness to do this for us because it's a job that's one more job on top of everything else you do, but it is a very well worth, and I think rewarding for me it is to work with you, knowing you have the best interests and the heart of our kids in our district always foremost than mine. So I thank you for continuing to do what you do have done. And thank you, Michelle, for your service with us. It's been a real pleasure having you on the board.
It's been a pleasure.
We have one more.
Yep, we do.
Okay. Next, we're going to move into our executive session. So we'll be adjourning to executive session based on Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five sub-one sub-G to confer with legal counsel who is rendering oral advice with respect to litigation pertaining to the Camp Three school forest trap shooting range. And someone who's ready, I will need a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session with stats nineteen point eight-five one G to confer with legal counsel.
We have a motion by Josh, second by Mitch. Going into executive session requires a roll call vote. Stacy?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Michelle? Mitch?
Aye.
Alicia? Aye. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. At this time, we will move into executive session.